Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the village board meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Gus.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Present.
Trustee Addison.
Here.
Trustee Sidik.
Here.
Trustee Wells. Attorney Farolo. Mayor Hucker.
I am here.
And Clerk McDonald is present.
All right, we have a quorum. If you would all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united at heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice
First item tonight is the approval of the minutes from the October 24th regular meeting of the village board. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll be happy to second his motion.
We have a motion by trustee Gus, and a second by trustee Johnson. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of warrants. Bills presented for payment in the amount of $2,103,228.30. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll give you that motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Johnson. I'm going to have trouble talking tonight, I can see it now. Second by trustee Miller. Discussion.
I'd like to comment on one item, and about half of this amount is paying off bond for our public works facility, which is, I'm really pleased that we've been able to do that and save our citizens some money on interest going forward. It's taken a little bit of tap dancing on the part of our administration, our finance director, to maintain our other funds balances, but this is really a great thing to do to pay this off early. So, I applaud staff for recommending that.
Amen. All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I have nothing on the agenda for special businesses. Is there any special business from the peanut gallery? I mean, okay. Now is the first of two opportunities for the public to comment. This would be for public comment on any agenda items. Anyone wish to address the board on any of the agenda items coming forward. Second opportunity will be a little closer to the end of the agenda. Don't all jump at once. All right, we'll be back soon. Nothing for the mayor's report tonight, so we'll move on to trustee reports. First up is trustee Gus.
Thank you, your honor. There's one item tonight. You folks are not doing anything on December 10th. You can come to our village hall. We're going to have a stress-free adult coloring from 11:00 to 12:00 p.m. Come on out and join them for a relaxing hour of coloring, the holiday stress away.
Whoa.
That's it for me today.
There you go.
So, we'll see you there.
Do you have to stay in the lines?
I'm not judging, so I don't think so.
Okay.
It's a judgment-free coloring.
You have a small tip pencil or a big white magic marker?
Yeah, okay.
All right. Next up, trustee Johnson.
Thank you, mayor. I just have two items. One is that finally, our year-end financial records have been completed and filed. It's about a six-month process, so we're about to start the budget for next year. The second item is our next finance committee meeting will be the 20th at 6:00 p.m., and there are a couple of items that I was told this evening that will be on the agenda that might be of interest to the rest of the board, and one is, as we discussed in our last board meeting, is cannabis, discussion of that at the finance committee meeting, and also the FEMA proposal for FEMA grants for a couple of properties. So, those two will be on our agenda and might be of interest to the rest of the board who may or may not want to attend. It might induce them to do that. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. All right, trustee Miller.
Thank you, your honor. Just one item. The Census Bureau is recruiting, it's recruiting thousands of people across the country to assist with the next census that's coming in April next year, 2020 census count, and Beach Park's Complete Count Committee is sponsoring our own hiring event here at the village hall. Any residents who are interested in applying should mark their calendars with a "Save the Date" for Wednesday, November the 20th. That will be from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. right here in the lower level, and there will be representatives from the U.S. Census Bureau here to take applications and answer questions. And we have flyers upstairs that look like this. They're flyers, it's maybe on the website, too, I think. Yes, very eye-catching, nice colors, and I'd like to now call a little attention to our assistant administrator, Lisa, as she's been representing Beach Park at the Lake County level with the Complete Count Committee, and maybe Lisa can tell us a little bit more about what's going on and how Beach Park is being represented there.
Sure. We, so the Village of Beach Park, we were the first ones in the region to form a Complete Count Committee, and as such, we've been kind of taken a leadership role on the coordination of the effort. So, we're working with the Zion Benton Library as well as the City of Zion. The three entities have applied for three different grants in order to help fund our campaign. Our campaign is going to be based on three prongs. There's going to be an awareness element, an education element, and then an action element, where the library will sponsor events at the library as a safe place where people can go and fill out the census. The awareness portion will come with, you'll start seeing signs, and we'll have buttons and things like that. And then, the education part is we're talking about putting together videos that will be available for anyone who's speaking to a public group, but it'll have a local video that you can show, a three, four, or five-minute video that kind of describes why it's important here in this region to apply for the census. Because we're working together, Lake County also contacted us and asked us to attend a meeting earlier this week where we presented, I presented to the committee what we're doing as far as this joint effort, and then the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus has also picked up on this and sent the ideas and some of our information out to the entire region, including all of the collar counties. So, it's nice to get that kind of support, and we're continuing to grow the effort, and hopefully, this will result in a good census count. This is very important to Illinois. If you haven't heard, there is a chance that we could lose up to two federal representatives because of low numbers in Illinois. It's also important to Illinois because it represents about $1,800 per year over the census decade. So, there's a 10-year census, $1,800 per person who is uncounted. We would lose that money. So, it is a really, per year. So, it's an important thing, so.
And Lisa's been doing a really nice job of collaborating with the, I know it's near and dear to the mayor's heart.
Yeah.
Collaboration with communities, with Taxing District, and, you know, just anybody else in the area who's been, the library, you know, the park districts, all kinds of other community efforts have been coming here, you know, and centralizing here. So, we're real pleased to be a part of that.
We've had faith-based organizations as well, and any community group that has any kind of a following, we're trying to engage with. I said the other day that, you know, what's important to me is that we count all the people that are counting on us, because that's our revenue. We, our state's shared revenues come to us as a percentage of, or as a quantity of our population. So, we have to, we have to make sure we've got an accurate count. At one time, Waukegan's comment was that they felt they might be as much as 15% or so under-reported in population.
Oh, that's a big number.
When you've got 90,000 people or whatever, that's a large chunk of people. So, and that's, that's what pays for their police and fire and all those other things as well. So, it's very important that we count everyone, so.
Yep, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items. For anyone who was wondering, I want to let you know that the bathroom facility at Founders Park has been winterized. It's closed for the season. I do believe I saw that a portageon for the winter walkers has been delivered, so there is an option with the bathrooms being closed. Also, Public Works completed a tree planting program this fall. There's been 25 new trees planted in parkways throughout the village.
That's very good.
Yep.
Thank you. Trustee Sidik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick item. The village is a partner with the United Way and other regional agencies promoting the new Lake County 211 program. This program is meant to be an access point for Health and Human Services in the area. Residents who have questions about housing utilities, a need for food, or any other resources that they might need, they can just call or text 211 and be quickly connected to whatever resource that they may need. Also, there should be a little article in our upcoming newsletter that gives additional information on that as well, and that this program is also confidential for the actual smaller. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you. Trustee Wells.
Thank you, your honor. I have one item for your consumption. Just wanted to inform you that there were 66 permits issued in October. That number includes water service permits, a vehicle sales permit, and garage sales permit. There were also 151 inspections performed and 94 code enforcement actions taken throughout the month of October. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Jerry, have you got anything else for us tonight? Okay.
Before you move on, mayor.
Sure.
I had a couple of questions on his report that was emailed to us, if I might.
Okay.
Well, questions and observations. One of them is, and we discussed this at the TIF committee, is the pending state work on Sheridan Road and Green Bay Road, and we need, as you mentioned, we really need to keep a close eye on that. Their plan is not tenable for the Green Bay Road corridor with respect to future commercial development in Village Beach Park, and I urge board members, mayor's staff, to communicate, residents, to communicate with our state-elected officials and appointed officials in Department of Transportation to change that plan. And not, that was kind of an ideal plan from some dreamer in Springfield, I think, that doesn't consider our needs here. Sheridan Road, not a lot can be done about that. He did mention, Jerry did mention in his report, the potential for extending the walking path, which is very exciting. So, that may be a silver lining in that dark cloud of months and months of having Sheridan Road closed down. Another item here is the sheriff's office contract. Is there any update on that? Have they, are we looking at the same contract?
We'll be revisiting that actually at the Public Safety Committee meeting Monday at 2:00.
I'll be sure to skip.
Yeah, yeah, I know. It's when the committee members could make it, and we'll be reviewing the contract and the changes and.
I'm just curious. I know in years past, they've advocated expanding, or expanded coverage.
No, no push for that this year.
Good, glad to hear that.
Yep.
One or two other items that caught my eye with your indulgence. SSAA 14, I think that we need to make a public point of the fact that it came in less than had been projected, and good news to the residents in that area, that their tax level will be lower than had originally been advertised. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, next, we have our consent agenda. This is our annual visit into all the SSAs, special service areas, and so I will read the list of ordinances here. We have several ordinances, and then we also have one resolution included in the consent agenda. So, it goes as follows. Item A is ordinance 2019-039, an ordinance levying taxes for special service area number six in the Village of Beach Park for the 2019 tax year, Heatherstone subdivision. Item B, 2019-040, an ordinance levying a special tax for all taxable property within special service area number nine in the Village of Beach Park for the 2019 tax year. Item C, 2019-041, an ordinance leveling, levying a special tax for all taxable property within special service area number 10 in the Village of Beach Park for the 2019 tax year. And item D, 2019-042, an ordinance levying a special tax for all taxable property within the special service area number 11 in the Village of Beach Park for the 2019 tax year. And item E, 2019-043, an ordinance levying a special tax for all taxable property within the special service area number 12 in the Village of Beach Park for the 2019 tax year. And item F, 2019-044, an ordinance levying a special tax for all taxable property within special service area number 14 in the Village of Beach Park for the 2019 tax year. And item G is the resolution, 2018-R33, which is a resolution approving a change order number one from Payne &amp; Dolan, Inc., 2019 MFT Street Maintenance Project. The first items A through F, these are the routine ordinances in your packet that are levying the taxes out to the special service areas. No surprises. You have, the rolls are actually on the, in front of your positions for each SSA, and the amount per parcel is enumerated there. Peggy, did you need to add anything else to this? Okay, all right. In addition, we have a resolution. This resolution is a housekeeping matter. We already approved the change order, but we have in our packet the resolution for IDOT's paperwork for Payne &amp; Dolan's change order, and that was the change order that had previously been approved as a $15,559.53 increase to the contract amount. So, we have, as this is under the consent agenda, we have the ability to consider these all at one time. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll give you that motion, mayor.
We have a motion by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Addison. Discussion.
I have a question. That item G, that is supposed to be 2018?
19. It should be 19 on your resolution.
Okay.
The resolution does say 19.
Resolution is correct. The agenda is.
Yeah, at the beginning of it, just says 18.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10, ordinances and resolutions. We have no additional ones to cover tonight. Item 11 is new business. Is there any new business for the board tonight?
I would like to bring up one item.
Sure.
Trustee Johnson mentioned it earlier, the issue of the recreational cannabis sales that's becoming legal January 1. We've been talking about it for quite a few months. Last month at our board meeting, we discussed it at length and decided to do some sort of a moratorium or whatever, because we didn't have time for any ordinance changes to control it, because we'd waited too long in the end of the year. We would have to advertise for a public hearing and carry on with that, so we wouldn't have made that by the end of the year. Our attorney recommended that we have something in place by the end of the year, seeing that that hasn't happened. Also, understanding from staff that we haven't had a lot of people knocking on our door for this. We've had one casual question, and that's it, unless something big has happened this week that I'm not aware of. Surrounding communities have had more interest, but just for the sake of having something on the books by the end of the year, I believe I can make a motion to direct staff to draft an ordinance banning the sale and manufacturing of recreational cannabis or marijuana, whatever the wording needs to be, within the Village of Beach Park.
Would it be your intent in this motion to opt out of all?
Yes.
Versions, all segments of the cannabis-related?
Correct.
Activities? Okay.
Banning the sale and manufacturing.
Sale, manufacturing, transportation, infusion.
Correct.
All segments?
Yes.
Okay. And that is a motion?
That's a motion, and we can get a second vote on it, and it's.
I will second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by trustee Addison, and a second by trustee Sidik. I guess it would be time for discussion, if I'll talk at once.
I feel like it's premature not having, really, I know the staff's preparing some information for us to consider before we make any kind of, take any kind of action on this. So, I think it's a little premature to, I mean, if we draft language, I don't have a problem with that tonight, but I'd be reluctant to vote on that until we've had a full hearing of the pros and cons of the proposal.
But like I said, we don't have time to do that before the end of the year. My recollection was.
Because we have to have a public hearing, and zoning has to handle it before it can. My recollection from the last meeting was that we did. Correct me if I'm wrong.
The zoning part is where we run into the sticking point. So, on zoning, for example, if we prepared for a zoning hearing, we would notice the hearing up. The soonest hearing we could have at this point in order to publish and to have agendas done, and that would actually be in January. Am I correct?
Well, if time is of the, is the issue here, I'd certainly be in favor of a temporary moratorium if that wouldn't close the door on future action, one way or the other on it. Whereas, if we take action negatively right now, my understanding from our previous conversation, is that closes the door permanently.
It only closes the door until we open it again.
Oh, we have it right. It's not like the.
Like what was done with video gaming. We banned it, and then three years later, it, public outcry or whatever, and it came back.
Then I misunderstood.
Yep. The one thing we don't want to have happen is to have no prohibition in place. Have an applicant sign a lease or invest in some way, and then have us then decide that we don't want to do it, because then we are, in essence, it could be considered a taking. To unwind it after we've let
Got it.
the horse out of the barn is a lot more difficult than to stop it and then take whatever time that might be necessary.
And, I mean, quite frankly, I think, as you pointed out, we haven't had a lot of interest, and I suspect we won't. If we voted in favor, we probably wouldn't see a lot of interest. We're not the prime location as far as transportation corridors, that sort of thing, population density. So, I would suspect that we might put ourselves through a lot of anguish arguing one way and the other about this if, for not. So, I can go either way.
Yeah, last week, we discussed quite a bit of putting a six-month or a one-year moratorium and then revisiting. If we were to do that, then we are forced to revisit it at that six-month or one-year point. If we ban it now, and a year or two years from now, there's some sort of public outcry, and it becomes necessary because we need the money for whatever reason, then we can revisit it. But by just banning it initially, we don't have to revisit it until it becomes.
And that makes sense unless, you mentioned revenue, and I suspect once neighboring communities have established businesses, it's going to be like Starbucks. There are going to be so many of them. There's a limit to how many you can have in the state, I guess, but once they're established, I think that ship will have sailed. So, if we're not interested in the potential revenue for the community, then we need not consider that down the road. If we are, I think time is somewhat critical, because these licenses will be, will be taken up. They will be built somewhere.
Yep.
I think we're all revenue-conscious on this board. You know, we've got a history of being fiscally responsible. Just personally, I don't think this is revenue that we need to go after. Not right now. That's my personal feeling on it.
All right. Other discussion?
So, it'll be an ordinance, I mean, depending on the vote, I guess, to opt out entirely.
Entirely.
And we would bring that to you for the next meeting to vote on. This is not official action by any.
Correct. This is just to direct staff.
Just moving that we direct staff to draft the ordinance and get it done, and get it done with.
And we would follow up after the first of the year with a text amendment to the zoning code that attracts the prohibition that will exist in another part of our code, probably in the business section of our code, and that'll come later. I think it's critical you do something, one way or the other, before the end of the year.
Right.
But you could always reverse course.
Yep.
And decide to get into the cannabis market, you know, after this ordinance is passed.
Okay. So, we're not closing the door permanently, but we're not leaving the barn open either.
See, that's what I get for not going to counselor's workshop.
It was riveting.
Wasn't able to go to that.
I'm sure it was recorded, Don. There's a podcast you can watch at bedtime.
Podcast. Oh, boy. All right, any other discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there any other new business to come before the board tonight? All right, now is the citizens wishing to address the board on any and all topics. All I ask is that you come to the podium, state your name and your case. Please.
How are you tonight, mayor?
I'm doing well.
Good. Does this microphone work? Jerry, how are you? Jerry's a nice guy, by the way. He.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, yes, sir. My name is Ron Waldorf.
Thank you.
I'm famous in the Village of Beach Park for many things. I don't know if they're good or bad, but I consider myself a law-abiding citizen. When the Village of Beach Park couldn't open up Cornell and Waverly to Green Bay Road during a snowstorm, I'd like you to know who did it. I did. Okay? And I didn't get paid for it. So, I helped the old people out, shovel driveways, do whatever I can to try to be a good person. I don't know if Mayor Hucker would agree with this, but am I speaking into this thing or what?
Yeah, we can hear you.
But I have had my problems and issues with the Village of Beach Park. I had an incident at my house a few days ago. I had a fire, a firearm, a warning shot in my self-defense. Unfortunately, the Lake County Sheriff didn't agree with that, so I got a ticket for illegal discharge of a firearm. It's the first time in 64 years. I'll be 65 eventually, if I make it that far, but it's the first time I've had to do something like this. I'm glad nobody got hurt. The Lake County Sheriff's take on this is you're supposed to stay inside your house. My understanding of the law, and I have some meetings with attorneys next week, is that I'm allowed anywhere on my five acres with my gun, concealed, unconcealed, doesn't matter. Like I said, I'm glad nobody got hurt. My wife was very upset about it. She doesn't believe in guns at all. Most of my family doesn't even own any guns, actually. But I would like to ask, I'd like some clarification on the law. I read the ordinance. I don't know, I see you have counsel over here and counsel here. Can I address the counsel?
Well, what is, just address your question. What is the question?
The question is, there's shooting in my neighborhood all the time. Target practice, all kinds of things are going on on a regular basis. At the end of my street, there's a man that's been hunting there. I don't know if he's doing it this year. I didn't hear him. Duck and geese hunting in the field in Beach Park. Now, from what I understand of the ordinance, there are no exceptions, other than self-defense. But I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering why I got a ticket for defending myself.
We can't answer that. That's between you and the sheriff's department. If you received an ordinance violation ticket, you will have an opportunity at adjudication here in this room with our adjudication.
Right, right, okay.
Counselor, and he will address, you know, any legal.
Because there's an awful lot of gunfire going on all the time. I won't, there's a couple of people on my street that do it alone. Yesterday, I heard it from the other side of the street. Yesterday, I heard it from the other side of the swamp over in the Wadsworth side. It's very common, you live out in the country. So...
Yeah, that's, there is an ordinance, you're correct. The ordinance does prohibit discharge of firearms.
And when was that law made, Mayor? Do you know?
I'm sorry?
When was that law instated?
I'd have to look that up. It's been on the books for a long time, maybe since the initial...
It's long before, I moved in in 2000.
Yeah, yeah.
I see.
Yeah.
So we have seen some old stuff that we had here with the code violations years ago. Do you recall, Mayor?
Oh, yeah.
I'm wondering, I'm going in front of the judge or whoever it is here in December. How come I didn't go to court for my code violations? Can anybody here answer that question?
I think that's your choice.
I was never given the choice, actually. I didn't even know it existed.
If you received a ticket, then there's an adjudication date typically issued with the ticket.
There was no adjudication date. I was never offered that option, actually.
Well, I guess...
And I'm still upset about it, actually.
I...
Because I believe we had some conversations about this, and, you know, it's ironic, you sit here and you do the pledge of allegiance and justice for all. Well, you know what? Unfortunately, that's not the way it works. It's monetary. Justice is bought and paid for. O.J. Simpson proved it. It's not something equal. It's not an equal situation for everybody. If you're disliked, or you've got a bad reputation, or had a discrepancy with the Lake County Sheriff when I was in my wheelchair, and they didn't do a proper investigation based on my PI lawyer, and they never, we don't even know the cause of the accident, because the other guy got killed, it was a fatal accident, and there's no reason to check taxes or do anything, because there's nobody to charge. Well, you know what? I'm still alive. Okay? And I would have liked to have known the cause of the accident. It may have helped me in a legal case or something else, so...
Can I get you back to things that we can, we can address? Because I can't address, you know, car accidents and things that have happened in the past and code enforcement issues from the past. If, I'm not sure I understand if, you're certainly free to speak, but I'm not sure where we're going.
Well, if you recall, last year, I spoke to you upstairs about a bulldozer?
Mm-hmm.
That's been sitting on the corner of Waverly and Cornell for 30 years. The man dug a basement, parked it out there. I brought it to your attention personally, and you were going to take care of it. Now, we all know that nothing's been done.
I don't think I said I would take care of it. I'm sure I said I would look into it, which we have.
Whatever terminology you prefer to use, fine and dandy, nothing's been done. In addition to that, when I got my tickets for code violation, somebody wrote an erroneous letter making accusations of me running a material yard out of my house and semis coming in and out like Ozenga material.
Right.
You know, you people sit here, you like to call yourself honest people, but, you know, you really didn't do the right thing, in my opinion, to allow whoever wrote that letter, which was probably somebody affiliated with the 150 Operators Union, okay, to use you and weaponize you against me, which is exactly what was done.
Okay.
And it's unforgiving, and it's something that I'm not going to deal with. But now let me get back to this gun issue, because I can see you're about to pick your hammer up, like you did a few years ago. Use that hammer on me.
I would just appreciate if you could get to the point.
Well, okay. The point is, with this gun situation, who determines the amount of the fine? Is that the judge, or is that Jerry, or is that a discussion between them?
When you come before the adjudication hearing officer, then the hearing officer will process that at that time. So the ticket is written for an amount, the hearing...
The maximum amount allowed by law.
The hearing officer has the ability to reduce that, to waive it, to...
Who has the ability?
The hearing officer at the adjudication hearing.
And does Jerry have anything to do with that process?
That's your due process.
Huh?
That is your due process, the hearing officer.
Okay. And does Jerry have anything to do with that process?
Well, I mean, he's part of the process in the sense that he oversees the department, writes many of the tickets. In this situation, his department didn't write the ticket, Sheriff's Department did. So it is a village ticket that you received, and the adjudication hearing officer is who will hear that. And that's, that's the process.
So here, Jerry...
If I may, the hearing officer makes an independent decision. Jerry doesn't make the decision. Jerry doesn't prosecute the case.
Does he, do they talk about it?
You'll be able to present evidence.
Does Jerry talk to the judge or the prosecutor?
Not on this, not on this kind of a ticket. And maybe in a building code violation, Jerry would present evidence. So he wouldn't present the evidence. The evidence would get presented, I'm not sure a member of the Sheriff's Office would be there, but they would present the evidence on their side. You would present your evidence to defend yourself, and the hearing officer would make a decision.
Now, if I don't like his decision, I can take this to District 19 and walk Eagan?
You can. You can appeal that decision to the circuit court. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. You'd have time, you'd have the opportunity.
Because to me, there's bias on Lake County sheriffs. For the first time offense to inflict the maximum amount is a strong indication to me that there's hard feelings about the complaints that I filed against Lake County while I was in my wheelchair.
These are all arguments you can make to the hearing officer. You're speaking to a body that has absolutely no control over that process. Public comment typically is reserved for items that this board has jurisdiction over.
Yeah.
That's a separate process. You will have due process. You can appeal if you're unhappy with the ultimate decision, but the arguments you're making are the kinds of arguments you should make.
I'm just trying to understand the process. I'm not making any arguments.
I don't mean that in a negative way. The evidence you're presenting is, are things you should...
I'm just trying to figure out the process. Because in a regular court process, there's a state's attorney.
Yeah. Or a village prosecutor or whatever.
But there's no state's attorney here in this...
There could be a village prosecutor there to present the evidence relating to the ticket. You then, in turn, would present your evidence in defense. You can bring an attorney, if you like. You can defend yourself, or it's up to you, and ultimately, the hearing officer will make a decision in terms of a fine, and you have the opportunity to either pay that fine if it's entered, maybe if a fine, no fine is entered, then it's, it could be over if a fine is entered.
Right now, the fine is $500.
Yeah, if a fine is entered.
By the way, it's not the money, it's the principle. I mean, man of...
That's fine.
Principle.
Okay. Are there, are there any other issues that you wanted to discuss tonight? You've, you've got the answer that you were looking for, at least at this point.
I've got some answers, but whatever.
About the process, which is all we can give you.
Okay.
Okay? And you can also get that information from the village staff. If, you know, you want to understand the process better, you can call and ask questions about dates, times.
To who?
Our village staff. You can just call and ask.
I talked to them today, they knew nothing. They were going to talk to Jerry and get back to me.
I'm not talking about the ticket. They won't know anything about the ticket. I'm talking about the process.
That's what I called about the process.
What you just heard here is what you can hear from our village staff as well.
So there will be a state's attorney present in this?
No, no.
There'll be somebody prosecuting the ticket.
It's a village ordinance violation.
So who's prosecuting? The Lake County Sheriff?
All right, listen. One of us is going to talk at a time. The village prosecutor will be prosecuting, representing the village. You're up to your, you can do whatever you want to do, but you will have, the village is, it's a village ticket, and the village is prosecuting the ticket.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? It's got nothing to do with State's Attorney's Office, so...
Or with this board, very frankly, so...
I understand.
Right, okay.
But usually, there's a, in addition to the judge, there's a prosecuting attorney for the village. You don't have two parties present.
There will be, there will be a village prosecutor there. That's what the mayor just said. There's a, there's a separate attorney, not me or my associate. There's someone that prosecutes for the village.
Yep.
Through administrative adjudication that will be there.
Okay. All right.
So that's pretty much it.
Happy holidays to everyone.
All right. Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
All right. Tonight, we have a cause for an executive session. This session is under, as permitted, under Section 2C1 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body. Do we have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Guss, second by Trustee Miller. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Guss.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.